Good evening, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, Murfreesboro City Planning Commission, June 2nd. We do have a quorum here tonight. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of the May 19th Planning Commission meeting. Are there any corrections, additions? Mr. Gilli, if you'd...
I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. First item will be public hearings. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. The first public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning approximately 4.4 acres for a total of eight parcels located south of Breland Drive and along North University Street from their current CMR zone, which is Medical Residential Office, to OGR. There's a map on the computer screen and this shows you the properties which we're considering to be rezoned. They're shaded in the orange color on the map. The properties to the north are zoned RS10, actually that's the location of the Evergreen Cemetery. And then the surrounding properties on the eastern, southern, and western property lines are all zoned CMR. This area, planning staff is referring to as Area 4 for reference purposes. You may remember that last month we considered Areas 1, Areas 2, and Area 3 for a similar rezoning request. And this request is made on behalf of the planning staff and for the very same reasons. These properties are developed mostly with office buildings, medical office buildings, a few of them are vacant. And staff feels that the OGR zone would be an appropriate zone for these eight parcels because they are existing, developed, commercial structures. And that would also provide these parcels with an opportunity to have some additional uses in those buildings which currently are prohibited. For example, under the current zone, medical offices are allowed, but a professional office such as an architect's office or an attorney office is not currently permitted there. So if you do decide to rezone these properties to OGR, then those uses would continue to be permitted. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. If you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, we'd be glad to answer them for you.
Ms. Ely, I'll ask one question. We've been looking at this plan for these three large areas for what, almost a year now?
We've been studying these for almost a year, sir. It's been months and we've been as diligent as we can, as specific as we can. So yes, sir, I think that you guys have asked a lot of questions and asked a lot on staff's behalf, and I hope we've given you those answers that you needed.
Thank you. All right. If you're not familiar with our public hearings, we'll open the public hearing and invite you to come to the podium and speak for or against the item. Please hold your comments to three minutes unless you're speaking for a group. Please address all questions to this panel, and at the end of the public hearing, we will attempt to answer all of your questions. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak for or against this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, in light of the extensive study that this staff has so capably done, I recommend approval.
Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is an annexation request to annex approximately 12.92 acres located north Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway. Storage House Development Company applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again, Chairman Young and Planning Commission members. This next public hearing is to consider the adoption of plan of service for seven parcels located along the northern side of Franklin Road, also known as Highway 96, and east of Veterans Parkway. The annexation study does include 381 linear feet of Veterans Parkway right-of-way, and you can see on the map before you that that's shaded in. There are six parcels that the property owner requested annexation for, and the Planning Commission included the seventh parcel that's shaded in blue as additional study area. It's been our policy to not completely surround an unincorporated area, and by annexing that parcel, then the city would not put ourselves in that situation. Ms. Aylott's had conversations with the property owner, shaded blue, and he is not opposed to annexation. I think he actually, he requested it from me a couple of years ago when we considered the property just to the west. There is one single-family house located in additional study area. The other parcels are currently vacant. They did have the single-family houses on them, but the property owner has removed them. The entire study area continues with current city limits. It's also within our urban growth boundary, which means we can effectively annex the area. The city of Murfreesboro will be able to provide services to the parcel, to all the properties, when annexation becomes effective. The MED will provide electric service and install streetlights after annexation. CUD currently provides water service and will continue to provide water service even after the annexation. And Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department has some sewer lines currently located in the adjacent creek. The Planning Commission should consider this plan of services and hold a public hearing before considering adopting it. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time or after the public hearing.
I'll ask a question, Ms. Ely. Veterans Parkway is complete to the Franklin Road back to 840?
That's right, sir. The Tennessee Department of Transportation has completed the improvements to Veterans Parkway. North of Franklin Road is a five-lane street at this time, and it's currently functioning. And there's also an interchange that links Veterans Parkway to St. Route 840, just two miles to the north.
So the road, the road is complete?
It's finished. That's a long answer, it's finished.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other questions? All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, invite anyone to speak for or against this annexation request. Anyone care to speak for this annexation request?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission. My name's Kevin Gunther with Design Resource, and I'm here representing the applicant Larry Elliott and Richard Ray, who is also, Larry Elliott is also available for questions. I'll leave most of my discussion to the zoning, but I did want to mention that we are asking for your support on this annexation. I believe that Ms. Ely has done a very good job on reviewing the services available to the site, and we believe that it is the appropriate time to annex the property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else care to speak? Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commission members, any questions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Chairman Young, if there are no questions, I would move we approve the recommendation.
Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. The next item of business is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 12.92 acres simultaneously with annexation to commercial highway located north of Franklin Road and east of Veterans Parkway. Storage House Development Company applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you again. Chairman Young, this rezoning request is for the seven parcels we discussed previously in the annexation request. These seven parcels total 12.92 acres, and they are located along the northern side of Franklin Road, Highway 96, and they're just east of Veterans Parkway. The properties, six of the seven properties are vacant, and those six vacant properties have been requested by Storage House Development Company to be rezoned to CH. The Planning Commission considered rezoning the additional study area, CH as well, so it would have the same zoning as the surrounding parcels. And also, the conversation that we had with the property owner there, he was not opposed to that CH zoning. So I know that you would find that of interest. The properties to the south that are currently within Murfreesboro city limits are zoned RS15. You may remember that there's also a rezoning request for the property directly to the south, along the south side of Franklin Road, made by the Family Worship Center to rezone approximately 3.25 acres from RS15 to CF Fringe Commercial District. The property that's within Murfreesboro city limits to the west, across Veterans Parkway, is also zoned CF Fringe Commercial District. But these properties are currently vacant and have not been developed. The properties just to the west were rezoned CF approximately two years ago. Properties to the north and the east are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County. These seven parcels are currently zoned RS15 under Rutherford County zoning districts. The request to zone CH is for, well, the applicants have not given us any specific user or any specific plans that they would like to develop this property with, but they believe that a CH zoning would be appropriate for the area since this is a rather large chunk of land, it's almost 13 acres. There's an opportunity to develop it, which doesn't exist for smaller areas, so they decided that they'd like to request a CH zoning. And also, the Blackman Land Use Plan does consider a commercial node for this corner. Initially, where the Planning Commission should consider rezoning these properties to CH. If you have any questions about the request, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing before taking action upon that request.
Any questions? I'll wait. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ely. We reserve the right to call you back. All right, we'll open the public hearing and ask anyone that would like to speak for or against this, come to the podium and state your case.
Good evening once again, Kevin Gunther with Design Resource, and representing Mr. Elliott here on the rezoning. We would like to request this be commercial highway, and we feel that it strongly advocates that for several reasons. One is the location of the property at this major intersection of two arterials. And with the infrastructure that's been put out in place, and the connection to 840, and of course, Highway 96 connecting back to 24, and the Blackman Plan calling for this as a major commercial node, we feel that that CH zoning would best suit not only the developer, but also the community at large, and allow for a flexibility of uses that would benefit from the infrastructure and the planning and the thought that has gone into the surrounding area. We also believe that the size of the parcel would advocate commercial highway, given that it's 11 acres. The larger size allows the developer the opportunity to prepare a site plan with the appropriate circulation requirements, layout, and setbacks that would be able to facilitate the type of commercial highway uses that might be proposed for the property. And the third thing is the infrastructure. The infrastructure that is in place there, and we believe will continue to expand along Highway 96, and with the surrounding commercial development, and we believe that commercial highway would be a good use of that infrastructure, once again, not only for the parcel itself, but to benefit the city at large and the community that's invested in the area. And with that being said, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Wilson?
No, Mr. Gunther.
Mr. Gunther, I have a question, sir. What does the Blackman Land Use Plan call for at this location?
It's a commercial node. I believe the mixed uses include, I don't know the specifics of the mixed uses, perhaps Mr. Aylott and Ms. Ely might help us with that, but I do know there's a commercial node with mixed uses.
That's correct. It calls for a commercial node.
Correct.
Yes, sir, it does. It calls for a commercial node at this major intersection, and it leaves out the, excuse me, it leaves the possibility that commercial highway, commercial fringe, or planned commercial development could all be implementation zoning classifications for achieving that.
But in the great plan, the plan, the Blackman Land Use Plan, it's what, been seven years, six, seven years, and it calls for a commercial node. That's what I wanted.
Yes.
I wasn't sure what that called. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, along those lines, Ms. Aylott, have you seen anything where situations changed such that that study might not be applicable now? I mean, or do you feel like it's still appropriate?
If anything, I believe that there is a maturing of the area that's over 10 years old now, the Blackman Study, and it was done with the community that was probably more rural in the area, that there had not been as much development. As time passes, I think we will find that we will probably need to go beyond some of the limitations that we might have wanted to see back at that time. I believe that as time passes with the construction of the Veterans Parkway, we're going to see this as a more important roadway than we had projected it to be 10 years ago. And as such, it will bring in probably a greater degree of what you call commercial-type traffic passing through, and it will serve the community probably better as a commercial area than as a multifamily area or as a single-family residential area.
And the property across the street from Veterans, across the street, we just had a rezoning of that property too. What do we rezone that to, if you remember?
The property on the south side that's owned by the, I guess it's the Fellowship Church, the Family Worship Center, excuse me. The front's also on Moreland Road that's a long skinny parcel. The front, 250 feet, we have recommended for zoning to a commercial fringe. And the remainder of the tract will remain as RS15 with a special use permit for a church.
All right.
Also, the property on the west side of the intersection, north of Highway 96, consisting of four, five lots, that's been recommended for commercial fringe zoning as well. In that case, that had previously been zoned as a planned commercial development. It consisted of four residential lots that were developed as part of a subdivision, and the owner was looking to a planned commercial development. We rezoned that because his plan basically fell apart. It wasn't going to happen. And rather than having a planned commercial development, it wasn't going to happen, commercial fringe seemed to fit it better, and we recommended that, and it has been zoned to that.
And do you feel that because of the size of this parcel, it may be more appropriate to have a commercial highway zone than the commercial fringe?
Well, I think there's a lot of truth to what Mr. Gunther's saying, that the community may be served by this area. On a small lot, we don't have much opportunities to develop things like buffers, or to very much flexibility in placement of structures, or the ability to address traffic very well. And you're limited by your size, and you also are shoehorned up against existing residential uses on lots of a similar size. You probably need to be limited more. With the commercial highway, and you've got more room to do things like the Type E or Type D buffers, you've got the ability to move your access drives further away from intersections, you've got the ability to put in turn lanes if necessary. Also, you have the ability to develop interconnections between your out parcel lots. The commercial fringe, or excuse me, the commercial highway can be better done. You have the ability to have a little bit more flexibility in your design because you have more room, you have a larger canvas to paint on, so you can do a better job, and you don't need to be limited as much. And let me give you a good example. With the commercial fringe, there's a limitation on drive-up windows for a fast-food restaurant. Well, and that's important because you expect to be right against somebody's lot line in a residential area. And if you're in that situation, we don't want to put a drive-up window for a Taco Bell beside someone's backyard. That would probably decrease the ambiance or their backyard ability to use it. In the commercial highway, there's no limitation like that. And if you will observe on this property, the property to the east is the floodway of overall creek. Nobody's going to be crowding that. There's a flood plain, so they're going to be sticking off that. To the north is a larger tract that has one single-family residence opponent, and I will predict that it was just a matter of time till we see someone come in and want a, something besides RS15 or a single-family subdivision. I predict they probably want a multifamily complex or some sort of commercial zoning. Knowing the, some of the family members there, I think that's sooner than later. Across the road, I think it's just a matter of time till some of that changes as well. So I sense there's less vulnerability on the part of the city, if the property is own commercial highway, than we would have been had the property to the south or the property to the west been zoned commercial highway.
Thank you.
Mr. Aylott, can you remind us what improvements will be made with respects to Moreland Lane?
Moreland Lane is currently under reconstruction to a five-lane roadway with curbs and gutters and sidewalks. It's being constructed right now, it's underway all the way down to Highway 99.
Okay. Thank you.
A question. Would that be from 96 to 99?
Yes, sir. Actually, that will be known as Veterans Parkway, and the name changes as the road gets built. And it actually will extend all the way over to Barfield Crescent Road where the five-lane ends in front of the Barfield Elementary School. And it's in different phases of construction right now, all the way through.
Any other questions? If anyone would like to come and speak for or against this, there's an opportunity. We're in the public hearing. Anyone at all? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions? Motions?
Chairman Young, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll make a motion that we approve this zoning change request.
Second motion. Have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item of business is flats and plans. Florence Village 2, Phase 3, site plan for 7.2 acres on PUD located along Nana Marie Avenue, Deanie Hastings Development. Ms. Logan?
Good evening, thank you Vice Chairman Young and members of the Planning Commission. This item tonight is a site plan for a continuation of an existing project located along the terminus of Nana Marie Avenue. And this is the continuation of Florence Village 2. This will be Phase 3. You have seen the master plan for this several years ago when they first began construction. And I have an aerial photo available if we could go to the computer screen. This is from 2009, and it shows one building. There's actually two additional buildings that have since been constructed, and the footing for another building has been completed. This would be three additional buildings. The units will be the same units that are being constructed out there currently in terms of materials and size. The site plan has not changed really at all since you reviewed it from the master plan. The site plan itself is in good order. They have made a couple of improvements to add Landscape Island that was not originally there, and also moved the building a little bit away from the parking lot. At one point, it was four feet away from the parking curb, which just, you know, is pretty close, but now I think it's about eight feet on the revised plans that were submitted yesterday. Give it just a little bit more room there from the parking area. And also, we would like to note, and just make it into the record, that the developer of this subdivision, or this development, has elected to use private haulers for trash service, and has elected...
Let me stop you. Would you read that first comment into the record, please? That's exactly what you're doing now, but I want it word for word, please.
Yes, sir, sure thing. Thank you. Staff would like to note in the record that the developer has selected to provide private trash hauling services for this neighborhood rather than install compactors at this time. All future residents should be made aware that private trash service is being provided in this multifamily development because it contains private streets and because no compactors are being provided. This will be an additional cost to the residents as the trash will not be picked up by the city of Murfreesboro's Solid Waste Department. This is just to note so that in the future, as we move down four or five years down the road, that compactors are required in multifamily developments with 75 units or more. The developer has shown areas for future compactors if the neighborhood so chooses to install those in the future. However, since they're not being installed and a private trash hauling service has been selected, we just wanted to make sure that that was noted in the record at this time so that we didn't have future concerns about that as we move forward down the road. I'll be glad to answer any other questions you have about the site plan at this time.
Is this final review? Yeah, is this final review for this site plan?
Yes, sir. This will be the final review for this phase.
All of the comments have been addressed.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Logan, did you say how many units could potentially be put in this?
I think there were about 144 on the original master plan.
Ms. Logan, what does Phase 1 have? Is this consistent to go the private route?
Yes, sir. This is consistent with what has already been constructed out there in terms of the private streets and with the type of development. It's consistent throughout.
And when all phases are done, how many units will be there?
I think in this section, there'll be 144 in Phases 1, 2, and 3.
1, 2, and 3.
For Florence Village 2. Yes, sir. About that approximately. I'm trying to go off memory, but it may not be, that may not be exact, but that's what I'm remembering.
Any other questions? Vice Chairman, if there are no other questions, comments, I would move to approve the subject to all staff comment. Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is staff reports and other business.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Young. I have three items. The first is I want to talk to the Planning Commission a little bit about a notice of a neighborhood meeting. The city of Murfreesboro is conducting a drainage area study. We call it the North Murfreesboro Drainage Study. And we have scheduled a neighborhood meeting to provide information about the study area and gather information from the public regarding the study. The North Murfreesboro Drainage Study includes a study area generally located along and beside Memorial Boulevard between Haynes Drive, Degenerate Lane, and Thompson Lane, Thompson Road. Because of the relationship to the drainage area of the study, information will also be solicited in areas of Hooper's Bottom, and that's the large drainage area along Single Road, along and behind Breckenridge Subdivision that some of us are familiar with, and Regency Park, Haynes Drive, Thompson Lane area, west of Memorial Boulevard, and the Dry Branch area. We have provided a map in your agenda package, so you can see, and if you can get that on our overhead for just a moment, I'd appreciate it. There we go, there's the map. The North Murfreesboro Drainage Study is being conducted by the Huddleston Steel Engineering with funding for the study from the Murfreesboro Stormwater Users' fee, and it was authorized by the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Board and the city council. Huddleston Engineering has completed Phase 1 of the study, which identifies the local drainage basins in the study area, and we have a map of that on our website. And our website is www.murfreesborotn.gov. This neighborhood meeting will be in open-house format. There will be no formal presentations at all. What we want is for the interested people in the public to come to us, to ask questions of our engineers, but also to tell us about what they know about the drainage conditions. We encourage them to invite their neighbors and their families. If they've experienced drainage problems, we want to know about them. If they have observations they'd like to tell us about, we want to know about them. If they have photographs, we would certainly like to have them. If they'll let us borrow them, we'll return them after we've made copies, or if they'll send them, if they just email them to us, we would appreciate that. The main thing is, we're wanting to get information from the public about the drainage and the drainage concerns in this general area, so that as we undertake our study and progress further with it, we will have the benefit of whatever the public is able to give us. So again, the meeting day will be on July, excuse me, June the 15th. It'll be from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it will be at the Herman Segal Elementary School in the bandroom, I think, but there'll be a sign in the front, and we'd really like for people to come. Again, that's on June the 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will be in open-house time, so you can stop, be in open-house format, so you can stop by anytime during the evening and chat with us, visit with us. We'll have maps, we'll have aerial photographs. We'd like you to be able to pick out your house on a map, show us what the problem is, so we can take the information and use it as part of our study effort. So if you all would like to come, as Planning Commission members, you're welcome. It's not mandatory, but if you have people who have asked you about this, please send them information. And again, they can get information about this on our webpage. Moving on to my next item. Mr. Ives has a mandatory referral that he wants to present to you, or Ms. Logan, excuse me, and I think he came to Ms. Logan by way of Mr. Ives.
He did.
And then I will have a final item I want to talk to you about involving your calendar.
I have sent you signs out in this area already.
Yes, we posted about 20 signs. They're small, but they're economical, and because they're at controlled intersections, people have a better chance of seeing them. So if you see one and you have questions, call the number, we'll tell you all about our meeting.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. This mandatory referral before you tonight is for Lot 118 of the Florence Field subdivision. In 2004, the city acquired at auction the property of which now sits our public works facility out on Florence Road. And at that time, we also acquired from the Florence Field Homeowners Association land for the detention pond and where it currently sits. If you'll see in the photo, so that you can see it up there on the screen, thank you. Due to the documentation by which that transfer occurred, it appears that the city may have acquired fee simple title to a drainage easement underneath the, underneath the actual easement itself. Instead of it being an easement, it may have been actual fee simple title that was how the city acquired the land. And in doing that... And in doing that, if that's the case, that would have created a parcel without a plat as well as a parcel without access to a public roadway. So in order to clarify the documentation for the ownership, the city proposes to quit claim to the title of the owner of Lot 118 to retain the drainage easement and copy that deed that's been attached, and that will clear up any misunderstandings that may be about the actual title to the land. And we have no need to actually own title to this land so long as we retain our easement. So we ask that you consider this tonight and approve it if you feel that it is acceptable.
So we're transferring it back to the original owner?
Yes, sir. Because it should have never been transferred to us to begin with.
It's to the current owner, not the original owner.
Right, to the current owner. It's current.
And we're retaining the easement? Correct. All right.
Any questions? You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Hearing no questions, I recommend approval.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing. During our last Planning Commission meeting, our work session, I learned that we may have several members of the Planning Commission unable to be in attendance at our July 7th meeting. And with that, I have endeavored to take a look at our calendar. Meanwhile, I, we discussed the possibility of having a tour of some properties along Wilkson Pike, so that before we talk about the zoning for those properties again, that we're in a position to have had a, an opportunity to learn about them. Also, I have another tour that I want to take the Planning Commission on, to take a look at our Broad Street and South Tier Street and some of our state highway corridors. As some of you are aware, Mr. Gillian, Mr. Young, we have in our work plan the Broad Street and South Tier Street corridors. That's something that was on our information in our budget presentation, and I don't think we discussed it at length, but there has been some discussion about undertaking a streetscape plan for these two streets. So to kill more than one bird with one stone, I would like to see if the Planning Commission members would be available for a tour with the planning staff on July 14th. That would be Wednesday, July 14th. And what we would look to do is to use the senior center's van, we would pay the driver, like the Board of Zone Appeals does, and we would use their van, and we would tour these streets and that property. Pardon?
We don't do it anymore.
Well, you still will in, in cases of dire need. I guess I remember that now.
Sorry.
Anyway, we would be using that van, and the intention would be to help you all to have a firsthand and on-site view of some of the, from some of the properties for the area around the new chambers, offices, and also to have a chance to look at Broad Street and discuss the pros and the cons and what we have in mind for a streetscape plan. So I want you to look at your calendars. I know two of our very important members who would be very much part of this discussion are not here tonight, but we will be contacting them, and I want to return to this at our next Planning Commission meeting in two weeks to validate this change in our schedule. So I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, see if it looked like it was doable, and if it was, to formalize that in the form of a motion at our next Planning Commission meeting.
It's 14th of July.
Yes, the 14th of July.
What time?
We're looking at reserving it from 12:30 to 3:30, but probably we're looking at from 1 o'clock till about 3:00 at the most. Two hours would get us everywhere we need to go and for that day. And I believe, Mr. Clark, we can probably give you training. If you're stuck in a van with two or three planners, you probably deserve training hours.
Mr. Elliott, I appreciate that very much.
He'd asked about that last year. And it'll apply to all of you, I guess.
Justin, you'd mentioned, you'd mentioned that you brought this up in the context that some people couldn't be at a regularly scheduled meeting. Are you saying that we're going to move our regularly scheduled meeting and do this?
Yes, sir. I think what we're looking at doing is just not having a meeting on, on July the 7th. And if we're in need of having a public hearing in the month of July, we would maybe move it to a possibility of a night meeting for our July 21st meeting. If we don't have to have a public hearing, it depends on what comes in tomorrow. Tomorrow is our agenda supplemental day, and so we'll know at our next Planning Commission meeting whether or not we need to have a public hearing. So I don't want to adjust the calendar tonight, because I don't know today what I will know tomorrow.
All right. Sounds like a song.
That was planner talk.
Yeah. Any other items on our?
That's all.
Staff report? So we're, so we're, any other comments? Well, with that, we are adjourned.